I'd like to call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Segwitz?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pogbonkore?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Nick Smith with Christian Life Assembly.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for who you are, or we thank you for the leaders, Lord, that you put before us, Lord, in this city. God, I pray over them today, Lord, that you give them wisdom, Lord, for the business at hand. God, we pray for our city, because we love our city. We're grateful, we're thankful, Lord, for what you've entrusted to us here. God, may we work together, may we be united, and God, may we do what's best for this place. God, we pray for your hand of protection, we pray for your hand of blessing, and God, we pray that you would lead us. In Jesus' name, amen.
If we can all stay, remain standing for our pledge. Councilor Wiggins, would you offer our pledge, please?
Yes. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, I'd like to invite Mr. Key Budge to the podium, please.
Good evening. We would like to, I'm going to invite Rob Dukow from the, he's the president, Board of Directors for Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County.
Bakerfield?
Of Kern County. And we're going to offer proclamation.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Key. Good evening.
Good evening, too.
Mayor Davies, city council members. My name's Rob Dukow. Most of you know me as public affairs manager for Southern California Gas Company, but I'm also have the pleasure of serving this year as chairman of the Board of Directors of Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County. And I want to say a couple things about the club if I can.
Yes, sir.
On recognition of this. As you've heard me say before, SoCal Gas is more than 150 years old and has been bringing clean, safe, affordable, reliable energy to our customers since 1867, when we traced our roots to the Los Angeles Gas Company. Today, we're the largest gas utility in the United States with a vision to be the cleanest, safest, and most innovative energy company in America. I tell you this to bring, to draw some parallels to the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club is actually older than SoCal Gas. The club traces its roots to Hartford Commandant, where in 1860, four women organized the first club, believing that boys who roam the streets should have a positive alternative to roaming the streets. With character development as the cornerstone of the experience, the club focused on capturing boys' interests, improving their behavior, and increasing their personal expectations and goals. The national organization took hold in 1906, and in 1966, the Boys Club of Bakersfield, the precursor to today's Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County, was formed. Today, just as SoCal Gas is the largest natural gas utility in America, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County is one of the three largest, depending on how you choose the metrics, one of the three largest Boys and Girls Clubs in the United States. Each day during the school year, more than 8,000 children are served by the club in Kern County at four standalone and 64 school sites. The club gained its presence here in Tehachapi just last year in April 2022 through a contract with the school district. During the past school year, 60 students at Jacobson Middle School participated in daily after-school activities through the club and the five employees we have, the club has here in Tehachapi. The school district has asked the club to expand our capacity to serve 80 students during the coming 2023-24 school year. Out of all 30 middle school students are participating in the club's summer program being held at the Tehachapi Independent Learning Academy. And next week, the clubs here, the kids at the club here at Tehachapi, just like throughout Kern County and America, will be participating in activities geared towards celebrating Boys and Girls Club Week. If anyone among the council or city administration or in the audience wants to learn more about the club, next week during Boys and Girls Club Week, we'll be having an open house Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on our main club site at 81 Niall Street in Bakersfield. And we welcome anyone, just ask that you let us know so we can have a count that's planned appropriately. And I thank you tonight for recognizing the club and for claiming next week as Boys and Girls Club Week.
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We have a certificate of recognition we'd like to present to you and to the Boys and Girls Club. It's a statue of city council I'd like to recognize this week of June 26th through June 30th, 2023, as the National Boys and Girls Club Week. The Tehachapi City Council hereby recognizes this week and contribu-, contributions, I'm sorry.
Contribution.
Thank you, contributions of the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County here in City of Tehachapi. Celebrated since 1941, National Boys and Girls Club Week recognizes the invaluable services clubs bring into communities, paving the road for great futures, and are within reach of every young person who enters their doors. Signed this day, June 19, 2023. Thank you, and I'll present this to... I'd like to thank you, Rob, for your contribution. I can't even see that word, I don't know why. Tongue-twisted tonight. But as a man, I'm a man with three daughters, I've always been involved with the Boy Scouts for a long time, and anything to do with our young people today, I think is a very valuable thing for our children, to keep them busy after schools. I know a lot of parents are working today, but I think it's great that we can offer something like that to all our children. Thank you. Okay, next, go ahead, Key, I'm sorry.
Next is my great honor, having been a 25-year law enforcement veteran, that I'm excited about this next item that we're going to do. I'd like to invite Richard Standridge to come forward. It's time for him to take his oath of office. Not too late. And Tori Marsh will be conducting this.
Just need to raise your right hand, and I'll just read the statement, and you just say "I do" afterwards. Sure. I, Richard Standridge, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I do. Thank you.
My son Ethan.
We'd like to invite our future chief here, our chief, Standridge. He'd have his badge pinned by his son.
Don't stab him. Payback time. Hold that. I thought you brought some backup today.
I did, a little bit.
Okay. I'd like to appreciate all you guys, all you've served in law enforcement today. It's a very worthwhile, I think it's great that you guys do this for us, and I appreciate you guys traveling today to support our new chief. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I know I was going to be the first one, I guess mine might work. To say Chief Standridge, but congratulations, Chief Standridge. So Chief Standridge comes to us from the Tulare County Sheriff, and then Porterville City, and then most recently, the city of Bishop, where he was a police chief. The competition was fierce, but Richard stood out, and he was the number-one choice unanimously with our panel, and we're really excited to have you join, join our team and lead our force of amazing men here in Tehachapi. So what I'd like to do is take maybe a photo with the entire council and myself, and then maybe we can, we can do photos here, we can take, I don't want to use the word intermission, but because we don't have cookies and punch, but if you want to take some photos, but I would like to get a photo with the five of you, myself, your chief, if you don't mind, and a few more family photos, we can do that also. Go that way. You've been direct.
I'm following you.
Congrats.
Okay, right around me first.
Squeeze in. Squeeze in, thanks. Like we like each other. And your wife?
You want to meet your family?
Yeah?
She don't want to.
Come on! I think it's super appropriate.
Oh, I do not want it.
We're not going to do this for a long time.
Do you want to say a few words, or did you want to introduce?
Yeah, I'm going to introduce some people. Just so everybody knows, that's my wife, Dolly. I think we're going on, what, 25 years this year?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yes. Hey, I've been busy. I've been busy. I've been driving a lot. My son Ethan, and just to introduce some of the folks that came up. Tony White worked with me for years in Porterville, he's now retired Bakersfield PD. His wife was also Bakersfield PD. Tim Silva is currently an officer with Porterville, a good friend of mine. Chief John Hall from Exeter PD, we've worked together since the day I started, same with Chief Jake Costello of Porterville PD, and Captain Dominic Barto of Porterville PD. Thanks you guys for really coming up, I really appreciate it. So the folks in Bishop, it's tough to make that three-hour trip and go back, because I'm going to go back as soon as we're done, but anyway, I got to swear in my replacement this morning, so. Yeah. But anyway, it's, I appreciate everybody coming, I can't wait to meet you all individually, one-on-one, I've got to stop and talk to some of you folks as I've come in and out, and, but not to spend any time and really get to know you and appreciate the work you do, because I've done, you know, a lot of research as part of taking this job, and it was the work you do and the reputation you have is why I wanted this position so bad. So I only hope to do what I need to do as your chief, to make sure you have the tools that you need to keep doing the great work that you do. So that's pretty much it for now, and I'll see you guys Monday.
You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or... It's kind of intimidating. It's kind of intimidating. I know, I can tell. We have pronounced where it is. Thank you all for coming. All right, that was exciting. Next item of business is our consent agenda. All items listed asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contributable by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent item, consent agenda, but will be considered in listed sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do I have any public comment? Counsel? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion on consent?
Roll call before.
Councilmember Segwitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogbonkore?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Audience, oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully impress that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Person addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence. The matter of city business they'd like to be discussed in organization or persons represented. If any, to ensure accuracy of minutes, please fill out a speaker's card at the podium. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time of the item that's called to discussion by the mayor. Questions or non-agenda items directed at council or staff should be first submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than 12:00 p.m. on the Monday preceding the council meeting, otherwise, response to the question may be carried over to the next city council meeting. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda except on certain specified circumstances. The council reserves the right to limit the speaking time to individual speakers and time allotted for public presentation. The present, I'm sorry, the time is three minutes. Do we have any public comment? Mike?
Thank you. My name is Mike Selah. I'm from the outskirts of Rich Press, I'm a Kern County resident. I grew up at China Lake, went to school at Rose High School, graduated from Cal Poly with a degree in finance and minor in political science. Moved immediately to Phoenix for 30 years, founded three companies, been 20 years programming in a network environment 24/7, 365. Also, my first company was a real estate broker, I was one of the youngest real estate brokers in Arizona. I was a dual licensee in California at age 21. So I have a little expertise in both real estate and advanced telecommunications and programming. I started a blog, a free speech blog, three years ago during lockdown called River395.com. I'm not here to sell, promote, or sell you anything. The Director of National Intelligence just released, or declassified, a report on the movement of data, data, data brokerage, I guess you can call it, data mining, and how massive aggregate amounts of data collected from public resources, cell phones, GPS tracking, all of that data can be aggregated. It's called publicly identified, publicly available information, PAI. And PAI essentially gives you the ability to take data, property records, voting, voting records, criminal history records, any kind of public data information, you can put them all in a big pot, and you can link all the pertinent information, and essentially, you can, by inference with artificial intelligence, you can know the name of people without having personal identifying information. It's pretty easy when you add geo-fencing and geo-tracking, which means that they are monitoring all of the cell phone pinging or your location services on your cell phone, so.
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, thank you. Class Rayi is an Israeli startup founded by a former member of Mossad. It's a, it's a intelligence gathering operation, it's a very serious breach of national security. I would be happy to talk to any of you about the nature of this company. You've been using it for two years, I understand the purpose. It's a great, it's a great tool to know who people are and where they're coming from. It's also a great tool to track and know everything about you on a real-time basis, and that's where it's going. They just bought the data from Life360, you may be familiar with Life360. This is going to be, I would say, the number-one data aggregator and geo-fencing and tracking company, but I don't, I don't think Congress will permit it to operate when they realize what it is.
You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment tonight? If not, we'll move on to our city clerk reports.
Item number seven, RSI.
Okay, all right. I need to recuse myself, because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum. Mayor Proton's foging card will take over the meeting, sorry.
Okay, do I have, oops, do I have any public comment at this point?
Make a motion that we accept.
A council, do you have any comments? Okay, now you can.
Make a motion that we accept.
Sing it. All right. Although, never mind, I always do that.
Councilmember Segwitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogbonkore?
Yes.
A four-zero vote with a recusal from Mayor Davies.
Okay, item number 11, special events application. Mr. Costello?
All right. We have the Mayor Davies and council members. You know, usually these special events, we put them on consent, but a pretty robust process about how we go with these special event applications, but every once in a while, we'll put one kind of in for discussion, and this is one of those, because it's brand-new to the Mountain Festival. So as everyone knows, the Greater Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce hosts the Mountain Festival for 65 years now? Or 60? 65. 60?
60.
60.
60.
I'm looking at you, Councilmember Smith, 60? Okay, good. So in every year, we kind of hear a lot from folks that say, "We need something different, something new, let's add the Mountain Festival." So it's not our event, but this year, with Jeanette Power as the president of the Chamber of Commerce, some local business owners that have done a great job promoting local music, they kind of, we all kind of put our heads together, and, you know, we've done a lot of improvements downtown over the years, and most recently, Green Street was improved with this sort of lights canopy that at night looks spectacular. So we kind of thought about how to put all those together, and we came up with this event in front of you tonight, which is the Green Street Get Down is how it's been, been put together. It's three bands, working with West Lane Brewing, the Greater Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce, and Waste Management. We've got the Soda Crackers, Neil Skinner Reviver, and Three Bad Jax. Each band has played in Tehachapi in the past, they're excited to be a part of this inaugural event. There's a map attached, and what we're going to do is close Green Street roughly like we do for Farmers Market, and you can see in the map, the red areas are all the barricades and the ballers we have in place already. We're going to put the stage somewhere near Straight Leaves, right about there. We're going to be adding to the blue squares, the rectangles there are the restrooms and hand-washing stations. WM is donating those, along with the black, which are going to be trash and recycling carts. The pink are going to be a few food trucks, but we're also partnering with our local restaurants. So Kelsey's, who does tri-tip sales and outdoor down here in the Farmers Market, they are into the same thing for the Green Street Get Down, they will also keep hours open a little later that night, add some additional staff, because they will have a, they're expecting a pretty large crowd. Wellness Grill, same sort of thing, we expect them to be very busy that evening as well. And so it is going to be a free event, open to all ages. We will have beer sales that will be monitored through the ABC by the ID check and wristband, along with, as we do at Farmers Market, we have certain areas that are blocked out that say, "No alcohol beyond this point." Our security will be, of course, Tehachapi's finest, the Tehachapi Police Department, they'll have a large presence there as well. Our public works team will be on hand. More impressively, we're going to turn this thing around, because Sunday morning is the car show, and Green Street is going to be clean, the restroom service, trash emptied by WM Sunday morning before the car show. So we're going to pull, there are going to be two events in less than about a 12-hour span, and it's going to be, but it's going to be clean, and it's going to be turned on, turned over by our public works pretty quickly. So Saturday off this event, Straight Leaves is going to be open as well, there's the wine tasting. We've limited it in terms of our beer and wine sales to those in the city, so obviously Straight Leaves being on the corner, they're involved. West Lane Brewing has sort of taken up the big leadership role in this, but they are going to be working with their partners at Local Craft Beer, and also Old West Brewing, to have them involved in this festival as well. So it'll be a nice showcase, it's an opportunity, like we said, it's free, it's all ages, appropriate, the bands are mostly country swing Americana. We've had Neil Skinner Reviver, Revival play at the Fourth of July Festival the last two years, they've been the headliner, so a couple of these bands are familiar to folks in the area. So that is our plan, and this was sort of a, let's get this together this year real quick, and then we'll make improvements on the years to come. But we really think the combination of Green Street, what it looks like at night, adding another element to Mountain Festival, which is not at a bar or something, you know, back in the day, there used to be Mountain Festival dances, and the city used to be a big part of those. That's not the case anymore, but this is something to sort of, you know, bring some of that back, and just have a big community event downtown, almost a pretty big weekend for our community. So our recommendation tonight is to approve the special event application for the Green Street Get Down, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any public comment in front of the audience? Council members?
Mr. Segwitz? If I can make it work, come on.
Yep.
On the brewery area, is that all three or all four of those in one area, or are they spread out?
No, they'll all be in that area on the map, it says beer sales, we'll put them in Centennial Plaza near the ID check, and like you said, everybody's going to be wristbands, you have to get, you have to have a wristband to be served, and those are only available at the ID check, so there'll be somebody checking IDs, handing out those wristbands, and then the beer sale area will be right there in Centennial Plaza in one spot. The wine will be at Straight Leaves, obviously, it'll be in and out there, but the beer will stay in Centennial Plaza.
Will they have a, will they have a van, too?
No, no, they're just going to have their patio open, and their tasting room will be open.
I find it a little interesting, for a beer, you have to have a van for, figure what?
Oh, I'm sorry, a van, I mean, I thought you were going to say, are they going to have a van, like a music act playing? No, no, no.
Yellow van.
Yeah, so they, they ID check, so they ID check, because you have to go inside to serve, so they will be checking IDs as well.
We'll have no open containers out in the, in the area?
Outside of Green Street, no. Green Street, they'll be allowed outside of Green Street per ABC permit, we'll have the signs that say, "No alcohol beyond this point," so it will contain it into the Green Street area.
Do we have a budget for this?
Yeah, so we have, we basically, as far as monetary value, we donated $5,000 to the Chamber of Commerce to help pay mostly stage rental, assist the bands with insurance, and then even pay, to help pay the bands as well, because especially Three Bad Jax, those guys are actually on a summer tour. They're playing in Portland, Tacoma, Flagstaff, Lincoln, Nebraska, Kansas City, Anaheim, and Tehachapi. So, I mean, yeah, this is, they're a pretty legit group, and so, and they love playing here, not taking, asking a huge fee, but some of that money will go up to pay the bands' travel expenses.
I think this is really a neat idea, and I think it's a good plan for families, as you know, at first, we need more family activities in the way that you control the alcohol, I like that.
Yeah.
And I like the idea that this is something for the family, hey, let's, let's get out, let's support Tehachapi and do these things.
And the Soda Crackers, they actually, they're a western swing band, they were part of the Western Swing album Memorial Day Weekend, but they actually brag about the fact they play both kinds of music, country and western. It's on our Facebook page.
Councilmember Wiggins?
No, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Councilmember Smith?
Oh, thank you. So it looks like the, the bands will all be on the same stage, they'll just rotate in?
Yeah, it's both from 6 to 10, so the first band will play, you know, 6 to roughly 7. So the first band will play, you know, 6:00 to roughly 7:00, it's kind of a turnover, 7:00 to around 8:30, and then the main band will go 8:30 to 10:00.
So the speakers will be going north, it looks like?
Yes, they'll be facing north. Not a huge sound system, we're not a giant budget, so we're not bringing in a giant sound system. So, yeah, it'll be, obviously, we'll look to make improvements in the future. But, yeah, we're going to be facing north, down Green Street, towards Tatchby Boulevard.
That's good. It'll dissipate because the people on this, other backs, other streets, they kind of get the brunt of any, any of that sound, so.
And we looked, too, about stage placement. We kind of kicked around, you know, even having it at the other end just because of the visual of kind of looking up Green Street. But from a safety standpoint, being that close to Tatchby Boulevard, despite the fact we do have ballers and all that, we wanted to keep the bands a little off more traffic, too. And then the sound thing came into consideration as well. So, yeah, they'll all be in that same spot.
That's always appreciated. I remember as a kid, we used to have dances down at Green and Street. In the, I'm not sure what holidays it was, if it was just a festival. Glad you remember?
At the tennis court? I think so.
Well, I remember downtown at Green and right at that location.
Remember there was a dance when they electrified the first streetlights in downtown?
Yes, there was.
That was during the century. I have a photo in the City Hall conference room that says.
Yeah, I was there.
So what you're saying is we can expect you to be there dancing in Mountain Festival?
You'd never know.
He wants a remote, it's just.
Anyway, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you, Cory. That's a great idea. Looking forward to it, see if we can turn this around from that Saturday night to the car show. That'd be interesting. I've been involved in a lot of different events like that through my life, and I'll tell you what, it's a lot of work.
Our Public Works guys are primed and ready to go, and they've already got volunteers signed up to do it, you know, for the shift, so they're excited. So I'm sure they're going to knock it out. It'll be awesome.
Fantastic. Your car show starts about 4:00 a.m.
Yes.
Yeah. I know, I've been there many, when the volunteers were in the city, I was there many times checking in all the cars. I was there in the morning, like, checking on all the cars. I went home, took a nap, then came back and celebrated the rest of the day, so.
So what's the route of the vehicles coming in?
Right down D Street.
There's a tax strip there.
Yeah, you know, it's a couple of years ago, as you recall, and that's a great question because it does matter which way the speakers are pointed for bands and which route the vehicles come in for the car show. And they're coming up Tatchby Boulevard onto Robinson and Green Street. So it's very well planned out. So they're coming in that way, not through the neighborhoods.
Yeah, it would definitely wake you up. And, boy, did I catch it from the neighbors. This 80-year-old lady said, "I was going to get my shot done." Just, okay. And anyway, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Poggin- Poggin?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Councilmember reports. On their own initiative, councilmember may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information.
The city manager.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Garrett?
Just somebody. Yeah.
Mr. Garrett? No, it's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
These meetings are meant to be interactive, quite the right question, what it's all about, right? So a couple of things. I wanted to kind of flag the early success of this year's Farmers Market. Jessica and the team has just done an outstanding job organizing Public Works, our police department, others. Farmers Market this year, I believe, is the best Farmers Market to date.
Yes.
Great vendors, farmers, great participation, and we thank everybody for their support on that. It's just a great event. Second thing I'd like to report is, if you haven't seen yet with your own eyes, the Senior Citizens Center has a new parking lot. Your tax dollars hard at work. It's a public facility. The city owns that building. We lease it to the seniors for zero every year, and it was long overdue for a new parking lot. So that was just put in last week. So if you haven't seen it, go look. It's a great addition to the senior center. The third is the Fourth of July Independence Schedule of Events. So I did put this in your boxes at City Hall. It's a list for the day. But just a rundown, at 5:00 a.m., we have the 5K beginning the morning, sponsored by TVRPD. And then from 8:00 to 10:00, the Ed Grimes Memorial Pancake Breakfast. Crafts booths, craft booths open at 9:00. The kids parade starts at City Hall at 11:30, reminding everybody that we have decorations. So the parking lot across from City Hall, we're going to close that and assist the children decorating their bicycles, their wagons, what have you. Tatchby Police Department have a rolling closure from City Hall to Central Park, and that starts at 11:30, but come early to decorate, decorate your ride. At noon, Mayor Davies will welcome everybody, and the kids will lead us in a pledge of allegiance and the national anthem at noon in Central Park. The Wall of Valor, again, sponsored by the American Legion, will be on display at the gazebo. And the Beer Garden is sponsored by the Tatchby Valley Wrestling Club. Live music throughout the day. And then at 5:00 at the Tatchby Event Center and rodeo grounds, Bad Bulls start off the evening. So that's at 5:00 at the rodeo ground. And then at 9:00, as we've done for many, many years, very proud of this, we have our fireworks spectacular. And I know Ashley and our Public Works Department have been working diligently with the fireworks vendor, and 9:00 prom playing will start that show. I believe it's a 20-minute show, just very similar to last year or so. Really exciting stuff. And the fourth and final is a big thank you to Susan Wells. Susan Wells is the general manager of Golden Hills CSD. She's retiring at the end of this, at the end of this month. She's done a spectacular job at Golden Hills over the last several years that she's been leading that team. She's brought the city and Golden Hills together quite bravely, her and Dawn, have been working on this, on bettering our relationship in all areas. And then congratulations to Chris Carlson. He's been Susan Wells' right-hand assistant for a couple of years, and he's been promoted recently to take over the general manager position. So congratulations to Susan for her retirement, and Chris for his, his new title and job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Okay, councilmember reports. On their own initiative, councilmember may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. Take action, have, take action to have staff place a matter on the business for future agenda. Request staff to report back on subsequent, meeting concerns, any matter, or brief report. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything tonight?
Now green. It's all right. I think at the last meeting on the 5th, I mentioned about the truck climbing lanes, that we had a commitment in writing. And at the meeting, I mentioned that Senator Rowe was involved, and with, and I sent her a personal thank you, saying that, I think without her involvement and just everybody lining up here with Jay, Greg, myself, and Aaron Hakimi, and Kern Calig, and Al Shan, and Grove's office, that made it happen. And then subsequent to the January 5th council meeting, the next day, we had another monthly Senator Grove asked that we have a weekly, I'm sorry, a monthly update meeting, which we've all committed to. It was just a, I think, 15, 20-minute meeting, but we're just keeping our focus on this so that it doesn't, you know, quarterly or semi-annual meetings get lost. So we're going to, if there's any updates, we'll get them monthly. Anything to add, Jay or Greg?
I think so.
It was fairly brief, but they, they're keeping their commitment.
Yeah, we asked clarity on the boundaries of the project, if you'd like to report.
Yes, yes, we did get a little update on that.
I did. Subsequent, subsequent meeting, I emailed back and forth with the lead project engineer over clarifying the boundaries, because they had some, you know, they missed their vote. Anyway, it is, it is, it begins, if you're heading downhill, in terms of, they'll be repaving both sides of the road, beginning where, the best, they call it Tatchby Bridge, but that's a misnomer, that's not the right, that's what causes the confusion for me. It is actually where the road transitions from asphalt to concrete surfacing. It's before Broom Road, between Broom and the city of Tatchby, there's a transition. We all know it because we all get into the left lane because the right lane is so trash that you don't want to ride in it. And so starting there, all the way down to the Cali and exit, will be, will be completely rebuilt as part of this project, so.
And that's part, the truck climbing lanes is part of that project?
Correct. So, yes, so there's repaving both sides, eastbound, westbound. They will be making a couple of geometric corrections, meaning they'll be changing the curves and the banks of the road during those curves so that they're safer. And then they'll be adding these truck climbing lanes from the Cali and exit up to about the Hart Flat exit.
Segment two.
Yeah, segment two, so.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. So the, that project's going to be, the paving projects is 2025?
It all starts.
That's going to start next year?
No, 2025.
Is it?
It's all going to be one project, out to bid in '25. Expected construction start in spring of '26.
All right. But we are going to be.
We're going to have, we're going to be pushing to keep that schedule less.
And we might even, we just might push to have it move up if we can.
We're already working on that, your环保 environmental for section one and section two-three.
Yes.
And it might have, they were assisting our friends in California City so they can obtain a frontage trailer from California City to the Edwards Air Force Base overpass to make that area safer. So that's a project that we're working with that same team we were talking with?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Proton Poggin- Poggin?
Not too much, just telling people that we're going to have our freeway updated and have a passing lane, and everybody seems to be excited about that. And that's about it, you know. You know, as everybody says, "Oh, Tatchby's so cute." You know, "Mom," they go, "Tatchby's really cute." And I'm going, "Okay, we have a cute city." So it's changed quite a bit since I came here 57 years ago, so, yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Councilmember Wiggins?
I just want to echo the Farmers Market. It's fascinating to me because in years past, you'd go down there and show up. I was on the council, I needed to make an appearance, you know. Wouldn't be hardly any vendors, nobody people, and we kind of say, "Well, next week it'll be better." It's exploded. I'm absolutely fascinated by it. And if my daughter says, "Well, are you going to Farmers Market? We really don't need anything." I said, "I don't go to Farmers Market because I need anything. It's a social event. It's really a good time." And I see people from all over East Kern County. And as far as the fixing the California City Road, having been a journalist, I have been on really, really bad fatal accidents on that big curve, so that would be really good. And of course, the climbing lanes just goes without saying. It's all going to be good. Thank you.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
I'd kind of like to echo what's been said, but I have a couple of three things that I have concerns about. One is the parking on Tatchby Boulevard by a number of the auto repair shops where the cars sit on the street during the week. And it's not a safe manner to be there because people will come from those openings that are, if you know where they are, to where the railroad tracks are, they'll come through those, they'll come in between the cars, they'll come out in the street. I've had a couple of illnesses of that. There's a couple of vehicles down there that have been there for a month or better, and I'm not sure that one has a plate on it or not, but it just sits, both of them just sit there. And I don't think that's a safety factor.
Look into it.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of on an indention there. Well, I know what you're talking about. I go by there every day. And they're kind of on an indention so it doesn't really block traffic, I don't think. It's not a problem for me, anyway.
We'll look into it.
Okay, the other, one other one is, there's three massive holes out on Challenger that were dug here a while back. And as, as the growth of, with the rain and all of that, they're getting decoyed to where you can't see them, afraid somebody's going to, I know it's private property, but something should happen there.
Yeah, we were actually discussing, you're talking about wherever Challenger comes off of Barnett, and then begins there, it's off on private property. So, yeah, that's actually a perched water table. That's not rainwater, but that's, sorry, I'll get into the engineering of it. I shouldn't. I'll talk to the owner about that. We were speaking, Greg and I, about that about a couple of weeks ago, as it just happens chance. So I'll contact the owner. That was geotechnical testing that was done by the private property owner. But I'll express our concerns, in particular, now that it's filled with water, that it could be a hazard. And I'll remind him that he may have some liability and that it would be in his best interest to fill a hole in, so see if I can get some movement on that for you.
Thank you, thank you. My last one is, we just opened a really neat road, I think, and we've needed it for a long time. Opinion, as the extension went on. My concern is, there is no striping from Brandon to South Green Street, and there's going to be more and more travel on that street. And I think as a safety factor, that needs to be looked at soon.
We'll look into it.
Okay. And one last thing that kind of hurts with my heart is that I will be leading Tatchby, I'm not exactly sure. But I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity that I've had to serve on the council. I've always wanted to do this, and I always thought it was something to do, be part of it, and be, be part of your city, not only to say, "Hey, I love the city," but stand up and do something. And I applaud all of you for the work that you've done over the years and how it's grown. I came here in 1963, and there was 4,000 people in the whole area. I think Ray Garrett was one.
This is pretty close.
But, and I was here for about 10 years. My wife and I got married here. We had our four children here. On our 50th anniversary, we had a overnight sleep at our house with our four children. And one of the one things they wanted to do was go around the city where we had lived, where they were born. And we went into the hospital and asked them if we could go show them. She says, "I can't let you through this door, but if you come this way, we can go around." So they all, all got to see where they were born. Just the family of this, of the city, of the, I also work with the depot and been able to do some, some things there, but to see what the city can do and how it's moved and how it's grown. I thank you for the opportunity.
It's been some hard, hard-to-take news from Mr. Sakowitz, Brother Sakowitz. Brother Sakowitz and I have worked together in the church for 40 years. Many, many years ago, I was in charge of the church sports for all of East Bakersfield and Tatchby, and Keith served in a senior position in the church, and he was over the sports, so I had to train him how to do that. So I came home, and I told my wife, I said, "I have another person I have to train now." And she, "Who is it?" And I said, "Some guy from Tatchby named Keith Sack something." And she told me it was Sakowitz, and I guess Lynette used to babysit her's children when she was a, when she was a teenager.
We babysat Lynette?
Yeah, you babysat Lynette. So had a lot of personal relationship with Keith and his family over the years, and been a great honor to serve with him on the council. And I really do appreciate everything you've done for the depot and everything you've done for the community of Tatchby, and I like this. Thank you.
Mayor Davies, I'm going to make a clarification.
Yes.
Keith and I spoke this afternoon. Keith and I spoke this afternoon, Keith is not resigning tonight.
No.
He'll be resigning in the near future, but not tonight, so he's still with us.
Right.
For the time being, and he and I will work together, and at the point that Mr. Sakowitz does need to move on, then we will, we'll bring that to the city council.
We haven't got the money yet, so I guess it's not clear.
For your house.
Yeah. Yeah, we've talked about it, the church and everything, we're going to take a vote that you can move, but, you know, I can't do that, so.
Help me unpack the 100 boxes.
Yeah, there you go. I'd just like to, just be a positive note on the Farmers Market, positive, I mean, I'm hearing everything positive from the Farmers Market, my wife and I ride our scooters down there, and it's just great to see everybody, and the product is absolutely, I just can't wait till peaches get a little bit more ripper, so. But, no, it's just awesome to see everybody here for Farmers Market and everything that we've accomplished, and appreciate the leadership in the city, and my fellow council members and everything that you've done to serve. And with that, I'll find a meeting adjourned. Thank you.
So no, no closed session, no closed session this evening, there's nothing to report.
Okay.
Thank you.